Okay, so I think. Good man.
Check it twice.
No, he didn't. But he said it looked like it was, you know, that it was, it was, it could. He told me to do it, but it would like abandon it. Yes, and he said hopefully. Love you. It's the worst. It's, it's the worst crap. Because he's like right here and he's got this. He's up, left, up, right. Like it's okay, well, you look through the.
I think it's gonna be shorter than.
I don't see where I can try.
Ready? Oh, what?
You wanna do a quick practice run through the hallway? Yeah, two minutes, go ahead. It's gonna take a lot.
Well, we need an interventionist there.
Yeah. If we have to call it, do I just set alarm on here for time on time really going on? Oh, this is people, let's have you.
Wyatt, I want to eat so much of herbs right now, it really hurts.
Oh.
That's a grand meal, right?
Think we go from five to seven.
Fine. Yeah, tell me.
Oh.
I'm ready, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. It's the local community board of education meeting in town hall of order. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Ms. McKenna, would you please say our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. So we will go right into our presenting school this evening, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my distinct pleasure and honor to introduce the one and only Wyatt Stevens, principal of all work middle school, to share with the board their progress in Benchmark 2.1A. Mr. Stevens. Do you have a presentation in here?
I have some. Otherwise it's gonna be a lot shorter.
There we go. Got it, alright. Are you ready?
I am ready, right. Well, it's kind of, thank you all. I recognize how much time it's gonna take back in his personal life to do this for us, for those students here. Seriously, all serious, I truly appreciate what, what happens behind the scenes. I know most people aren't privy to all the work you put in and before I even come out and embarrass anyone, package you're like, yeah, I'm reading, I did it. So it truly, it truly is appreciated. Uh, we've had a great week today. We get to go around to somewhere in high school and see all sorts of great things occurring across the district. We've been talking about the future of the district. It really has been a fun time lately for us here. I know a lot of the fun comes stress, there's lots of work to be done and everything, but it has been a really fun time for the district here. I'm excited to once again talk about world award because that is near here in my heart. Been lots of times in the middle school or lots of years left in the middle school for me here, so. But we're gonna, we're gonna get through this for you guys in all seriousness. And so, we're gonna talk about how we are implementing disciplinary literacy through our Benchmark 2.1A. For those who are familiar with disciplinary literacy, it is the standard for ELA. They do break it apart for each one of the core content areas for disciplinary literacy. Same thing K through five has a document just like this. So we as a group of teachers, building, sat down and looked through this huge document and said, hey, how are we gonna do this? This is a lot to light up, right? And we kind of took it one step at a time. And we, the group, decided what's truly gonna be, what's truly gonna move our students forward? What's truly gonna increase our conceptual knowledge? And we decided to tackle vocabulary. And that was last year, we decided to tackle vocabulary. We started into this and by the end of the year, we felt that we weren't perfect. So we decided to go for it second year. In fact, we decided to go for it second year and they did a building goal for us there, world award. So using effective vocab instructional practices, I'm not gonna read everything to you. I think it's important to look at how we're doing it though, not adding another thing onto this vocab. They're already doing their content area, so the teachers are only doing this, they wanna know how to do it better. Just like the Cagan strategies. And we did it now for a few years. You can walk in the classrooms and see how the group work is going, it is amazing, it truly is. Uh, we'll talk about Marzano's six steps for vocab instruction and the flood fast focus approach. And there were balls, apps, et cetera, to go through this. It is important that I kind of focus on the, the effect size. Why is the effect size important? Because of all the studies they did that show us that by doing these things, students are gonna move forward. So if you notice the effect size on these, point nine seven, the first one is Marzano, it's not Hattie's, just Michelle will catch us on this one, so I wanna point that out. It is a Marzano study that actually this one comes from, the rest are Hattie's effect size. We can notice a high effect size of vocab. So I'm cruising through, the rest of the team is gonna come on up next, Andrea is up next, and gonna describe some of the research behind that vocabulary.
Thank you. So we base our instructional practices on four core books. So the first one is sort of like that diet book that's, that's not bad. So it has like updated vocabulary practices and some of those things we were doing. And then it has the alternative, like how could you, you have it up, what's most effective, what's better than what we used to do. The second book is really interesting, that's kind of, that's Marzano, he's a really famous person that talks about like what really works in education. He's kind of very featured in other buildings on Hattie's, he's kind of one of those people. And then the next one is K vocabulary. So the nice thing is that book kind of brings together the first book and Marzano's research about what works. And incident for our district by initiative, um, nation. So it really pulls it all together and that's the thing that our staff, I'll use a whole renewed script. Uh, and then the last one is really about academic vocabulary. So, um, this all that are put together, research that shows that there are twenty-five terms that are really found in the state and national standards, state and national assessments, local assessments, like those are the ones you can see the most and kids don't really know them well. Um, they're kind of surprised and they're gonna evaluate or illustrate. Sometimes when we see kids take tests and be like, I don't see a place to draw anywhere because they saw the word illustrate. And so we knew that one was hard, but we gave them a pre-assessment to see where kids were at and there were lots of words that they didn't know. So that was one, like all the teachers across the content are really working on. And that was nice because then they can take what they learned from that, all those structures and practices, and then you can use it with disciplinary literacy. Maybe it was not a little more.
I did?
Hey, Wyatt, Andrea is not just a pretty face. Pretty busy.
I was gonna be there, okay. So why are we focusing on vocabulary instruction? It's, it's really because it's interesting, if background knowledge is more, is more more than IQ when it comes to comprehension. So the thing about IQ is that it's pretty sad, it doesn't change a lot, right? But we can actually build up background knowledge so we can do something about that. So if we need to say that background knowledge is really good thing, it pushes us over into comprehension and conceptual knowledge. Um, and the interesting thing is like you can, you can learn vocabulary in incidental ways and you're not really even trying to do that, but also focus, um, direct instructional practice, and that's what we're really gonna talk about. So these are just examples of ways that you can acquire vocabulary incidentally. So, you know, reading fourteen minutes a day will increase your vocabulary by like a million more things, so it's pretty awesome. Children's books, even TV, it does work, but children's books are even better than adult TV, so that's amazing as well. But direct instruction of discipline-specific terms is a really dramatic impact in keeping students' conceptual understanding. So when we say discipline, we're talking about like the content area, so learning the terms and mathematics, or the, the terms and language arts. If you really focus on those, then you can really span what kids know. So this is a study by Marzano that shows if you have students, uh, are students, fifty percent of them are pretty average, and they take standardized assessment in a content area, and you don't give them any direct instruction, focused vocabulary words, you take it on their post-test later and they say, you know, fifty percent higher. But if you use direct instructional functions with really focused vocabulary, then you can actually upset the thirty percent. You can see that in this, like, video, in this next slide.
It was a coffee break.
So you can see that, that impact visually, right? I, I'm. Alright, so, so here's an example of just a few units in our social studies, I'm just in seventh grade. Nope, sixth grade. So they have a lot of terms in each unit and there's no way that you can really dig into those terms in a, in a focused way. So we use a strategy called flood, flood fast focus for that words. And, uh, it's just teaching with intention. So we have the teachers, like, really focus on focus and blah, but we have the teachers take all those terms in each unit and narrow it down to like eight to fifteen and they really just focus on those main terms for the entire unit. So it's not like eight to fifteen words a week, um, you know, like when your kids remember you get like a list of vocab terms, they're all over, they have to memorize all of that. All like if you saw on social studies, there might be forty words. So you might know that for the task, but like these little words are gonna take them all the way through twelfth grade and into college and into like, you know, if you wanna be a nurse and you take these particular terms in biology, right? So the words don't like last for a long time. And then we also can collect kids of words, so yeah, there are those other words, but we're gonna like use those in discussions or maybe anchor charts, but we're not gonna like really dig into them on the basis of their main terms. So we did do some purchasing for flooding, so ELA classes, they get like libraries in their classrooms, but science and social studies, we haven't really attended to that a lot, or maps. So we started buying some like really high interest creepy weird books that middle schoolers like really love. And we built those in the classrooms and we're using anchor charts and discussion. And we're not gonna go too deeply into that, but like, you know, that's all we've had to have. The big part, the thing that's been like the biggest move for teachers and we devote the most time to is, is this focused direct instruction approach. So it looks like everyone's focused words or teachers get together in departments and they choose the eight to fifteen words per unit. Um, they see the words lots, lots of times, they put the words in their own definitions, their own words. They like create like symbols or pictures for each of those words, then they play games. So it's not like you don't wanna make flashcards, like that's a good thing. Like they're getting it in the classroom, you don't have to like rely on your own study, but also they're having deeper discussions about it, doing a lot more stuff with the words. What it's not, it's not like arena or weekly word list, only using the boldface words. So it's a lot more complex than what we used to do. And it's smarter. I'll be back. Okay, um, for those of the, I think I'm gonna be lost, but either right, you can hide your nerves, it means it's a little more practice here. Um, so if you look at that top box and you're looking at political geography and in the back of the book, old school teaching, you could probably raise your hand if your teacher told you like, okay, we're flipping to the back of this unit and you're gonna write down the term and then the definition, that's thirty-two words. If you look at the next one now, it's forty-seven words. So what are they really getting out of those thirty-two words, those forty-seven words? They're not getting anything. So that goes back to why we're focusing in, we're zeroing in on looking at those thirty-two sets of words. Look at those forty-seven sets of words. What do we as a department feel like are the most important eight to fifteen? So let me transfer those words over to one example of this vocabulary blog. So you can see they narrowed it down, that one shows, um, I believe eleven words. And it does have the formal definitions. So then what are we asking kids to do? How are we actually providing a direct instruction for that? We're helping them tie things to it. So the my definition, what does this actually mean to me? So I have seen this in one of our English teachers' classrooms, it was so old way that she did it. You'll see some data on her coming up, yeah, with Andrea. Um, but the one way was like, okay, what does it mean to you? Every kid, you know, they wrote down what it meant to them. And then they got metaphor. And all four shared what it meant to them. And so then you could actually see like, oh shit, they're racing, they're Gigi, you know? And then each pad got to share out what they thought it meant to them. And each pad got direct feedback from that teacher instantly. And if they were on track or not, they put it in their own words. And then as far as the illustration goes, sometimes you're just looking for a hook. So for instance, if you're talking about the word DNA, right? What does that mean to a kid? What does DNA mean to them? I don't know. Well, that's the key to us, that's what makes us, us. So you might actually have a child that just draw a picture of the key. And that's okay, because to them, when they're thinking about that, they're gonna remember the key and this is the key to me and how I made up and how I learned best and that my eyes are blue. And so we're just trying to create these connections with kids in a different way than was done when we were all sitting in the classroom. So we're pretty proud of this chart, this is something new that we started doing a little more in this year. Um, and this is just one example, I can't, it's just a screenshot, so you can't actually click through and show to you guys. Um, but through each unit with each department, you can see down at the bottom, the ELA six, the springboard seven, the ELA seven, we've asked each of them to identify those eight to fifteen key terms per unit in their subject. And this is shared with all the teachers in our building. So where this gets really cool is if I'm a math teacher and I have a common term like velocity that a science teacher may also be using, I can flip through to that science teacher, I can see if she's teaching that same term, I can see what unit it's in, and maybe we can do some cross-curricular work together to make sure that our kids understand what's the difference of this term in science versus in math. And can we work together to make sure that they understand overall what it is and what it looks like per department? So again, this is new to us this year, this is a living document. So as they go through, they might decide as a department, like, no, we're really gonna focus on this term instead of that. But it's pretty cool to see the teachers in there and to see them using that. Um, and then again, we just have our, um, five stages of direct vocabulary instruction. So activating, defining, symbolizing, then we're moving on to the deepening and the remembering. So I don't read it all to you guys, but those are the five stages that we ask teachers to use. So obviously they're gonna start with number one, we're gonna start by collective background knowledge, where do the kids already know about it? Or do they know anything at all? Because sometimes you might say something and maybe it goes with you guys, like, I don't know what you're talking about. And by the end of it, we really wanna get to where this deepened gap of understanding, they can use it on their own, they can speak to that sheet we talked about before where they have their own definition of it, and then they can recall that information. And so that's really where we're trying to go with it. And then I'll bring Andrea back up, this is, uh, learning coach cycle, and she actually got to do with some of our teachers, I'm really good. So can you just, um, pictures of the learning cycle? So that first picture is just the students completed vocab very long. And then on the bottom, this is a different teacher, she had the students working in their Cagan teams, where each team made a set of cards and one set of cards had like the images for each, each word and then the word on the other set of cards. And then they mixed them up and they put them in a baggie and they gave it to the other teams, and the teams played those cards. Uh, the students at the top, um, are doing a place to trade. So I think that our students create the cards themselves with the words, but we created all of those, like applications on there. They have synonyms, antonyms, and definitions, and little ways to coach each other. So they each get a card, they stand up, put their hand up, and five, or high five something near them, and then they each take a turn asking each other their questions and then they coach that and then they switch the cards and they buy new partners. So they get like, um, maybe fifteen minutes and we try to get them to get as many cards as they can so that they can review and actually really play a lot. So I think the really exciting part is, um, yeah. So this teacher did two coaching cycles and they did pre and post assessments. And so, um, pre-assessments are like thirty-one percent, twenty-five percent, um, and then the ending was like, you know, seventy-nine percent, seventy-three percent, which is pretty exciting. But they would really need the first unit, it's the narrative unit, so the students are writing their own stories. And because we took the vocabulary terms that like they couldn't apply into their writing, it was like the first time that the kids had actual stories that weren't like series of events. Like they actually attended to the exposition because they knew what it was, or they knew what the climax was and they knew that they knew that part. We hadn't seen like that level of application before, um, part of the school. So students took the FWA test, that's a classic, I think, three times a year in ELA. Um, you know, I, I think this grid for the data for the ELA, usually they can see where they compared a, a property else. And it's really not like that much difference between the teachers, it was like nothing that stands out, so it's kind of, it was looking exciting. But finally, there, there was a difference. So this student, this teacher had seven points, um, a brick road on average for all of our general classes, which is a lot of road. So I had her reflecting on that, she's like, I don't really know, I've done anything different except for the vocabulary pieces. There's a lot of vocabulary in FWA too. So, I mean, there are lots of factors, you can't say that that's exactly it, but, um, she feels pretty strongly that it's made a big impact. Yeah, it's exciting.
I'm Julie Yen, for those of you that don't know me, and I am, um, mandatory coach, I sign half my time, yeah, RW and half my time in summer. Um, so Andrea had mentioned earlier, using the essential twenty-five book to identify, um, some of the most common academic terms. And so we decided to start an initiative, an initiative during I connect that, um, every I connect teacher was gonna focus on vocabulary using the academic terms. So we pulled, first semester, we pulled fifteen terms out. And from there, they were gonna use the five phases of Cagan, um, for the kids to dig in and to really get to the point of understanding those terms. With the intention that we know that they see, um, all of those terms on our standardized assessments as well as classroom assessments. So the exciting part is the data, right? We do the research, we put it into practice, and then the data tells us, did it work? So this particular teacher, this, um, represents one of our I connect classes that did.
That's overall.
Oh, schoolwide, sorry, sorry. So let's backtrack, I'm getting ahead of myself. So schoolwide, at the beginning, um, our pre-assessments said that roughly twenty-three percent of students were mastery of those academic terms. And then post, after doing some of the activities, we had a series of five, sixty-seven percent, um, were showing mastery after. So we've got a forty-four percent increase. I think this one kind of blew our minds. So this teacher did, committed to all the activities, um, hit all the phases and really encouraged and pushed, um, their I connect class. And so at the start of it, they had fourteen percent of students are at mastery and after doing all of the activities, um, roughly ninety-five, ninety-six percent. So that was huge. We shared that at, um, at a staff meeting, at a set meeting, and, you know, a lot of the teachers were like, oh, come on, Andrea, she probably just added, you know? I mean, but it really was, like, you know, like, and their child is looking over like, no, that is real.
They sound very supportive.
I think up to the level of, yeah.
And, and so now, I think from the follow-up, you know, we studied itself, she where, um, you know, all the contents then were digging into their units and creating their lists. But I, I mean, then everybody was ready to do that, right? Because, I, I mean, the data speaks for itself, the goal is student achievement and this shows that it's working, right? And, I mean, teachers and students are working so hard and if vocabulary is what can get us to the next level, you know? I mean, why wouldn't we do it, why wouldn't we invest in it? So it's exciting.
I think the cool thing, like Dar and I did some cycles with different I connect teachers on this and we didn't get through all the phases. So we knew a lot of teachers didn't get through every phase, it was more of like, we're gonna try this out. But that teacher came to us, he wasn't like super excited about doing this, he's like, I gotta tell you, like, I did all the things and I swear they're so good. But it was a journey for people, so I got to unpack it on the next week and they're working on it and they all are like, yeah, do the vocab, so you guys, and just look at it every time.
Well, and I think, you know, this teacher made it through all the phases, but the teachers, we had individual sheets for all the teachers that, in their I connect, so they can see their own pre and post. And every teacher that participated, whether they got through all the phases or not, their students may grow. So again, you know, I mean, it speaks for itself. So it's exciting, it's, it's good stuff.
So as a ramp up, it was, and this should have been I connect, so it was approximately seven times for the semester. Um, that it was, uh, seven different activities, but they could choose lots of activities, whether they're how long type activities, vocab, all sorts of different uses they could choose. So every teacher did a little bit differently. This opened up so many different learning coach cycles for them as well, where they were individualized, because it is something new. It was an attempt this semester. We found things, as we were doing it, the first semester we did fifteen words. This next one we're doing lots, because it takes time to get through and like, like being that short, it does take time. So we're hoping as we go along too, this is not a perfect system or anything, but we are, and hopefully we'll see results. Thank you guys for having us, awesome.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to be easy with it.
Yeah. It's neat to see the improvement, the growth in doing it by studying and seeing and testing it. And that, not just making the kids grow, but the teachers are doing the same thing because it opens their eyes to seeing things work. And so that just makes them want to apply it, you know? And it makes their life easier too, you know? Kids understand things, you can now start sipping through things later because they understand your whole vocab. Let me say there, I think I've been on a test, you know, for grad programs and that, and sort of for vocab, but I think back to it, that really is powerful. I mean, so. Well, and that's, and everyone knows, the, the worst case is you go to a test and you read something, you just don't, you can't conceptualize what you're reading, you can't figure it out, you're stuck. And then it just ruins your whole thought process for the whole test, you're just like, I don't know, you know? So if they can get in there and actually feel comfortable, confident, so that's awesome.
I think, I think one of the best things though, listening, like your statement, I'm sure it pleases the, the staff, the teachers because they have to do nothing but change to help our kids do this amazing growth. That's all they're doing is changing and constantly learning. Like most of the little people, even if they're only one or two years out of college, they're probably like, well, hey, I didn't learn these strategies in college, right? And I'm just continuously learning. So it's great that they're, they're doing it, they're wanting to do it and, you know? And they're seeing all the positive reinforcement on why they do it, so that's.
So I really appreciate that because I would put my stamp up against the stamp across the state of Michigan. I truly believe that my teachers and my building are amazing.
I do.
So I, when I see this and I can see some results for them, the results of me is their, because they're teaching, they're awesome. I really do, this is awesome.
But I, I think, to me, the most important point of this, why, as you mentioned, that the outset was the focus on the effect size, right? We have such a limited time with our kids, oh, not only in the day, but in the, in the entire year. And you have to, there's very little that we do that's truly bad, right, for kids. But there are things that are much better and more impactful. And so when you've got coaches that are, I mean, and Darlene, I'm thinking about you, you're a math teacher, right? And so is talking about literacy initiative something that fired you up in the past? Probably not, I mean. We've all been hearing it for years and years and years and years, but the example that Megan gave about velocity and the cross-curricular opportunities that that presents, if, but, you know, what I taught, you know, it was, you had these ideas and initiatives and it was always like, well, you know, based on your own personal level of confidence. based on your own personal level of confidence as a teacher, and if it was good and it was high, and you felt like doing something that was totally out of your comfort zone, great, good for you. But there was never anyone who'd come in and say, here are some proven strategies, here's a great way to get to it, and we're going to help shepherd you through it. And to your point, why, all you need is a little bit of success, and now I'm a science teacher who never wanted to teach vocabulary, now I'm teaching it. Right, so, and I I know I say this all the time, but that's what the learning coach position affords us, the opportunity to do is talk about the science of teaching and delivery and instructional methods that are proven effective. Not just in appear, normed over thousands of instances of instructional practice, so. And to 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 use it, I Connect, there's still, it's it's really, really well, I guess.
Can you give a one shout to our professional staff, like this is really a building-wide initiative, like with academic terms, like all that stuff having names, teachers don't, they don't plan, they try to for I Connect, so every material we made, we had staff that would work on that. And our professional staff cut out the parts for the teachers and have it all done and ready to go, so it really like everybody was on board with it.
Megan and I were in class today watching Pair of Poes run the entire show. And it was awesome. I mean, so you, that's a great, great one.
I know I read leading, I love these presentations, but I say to myself, I personally need a learning coach.
Summer, summer, it's crazy, we all said the same thing about you.
This is where you need to get better.
I have a real like example too, that like I'm the math, like there are, and they keep coming, right? And so what terminology is in accounting? And so I now, I I like what seems off for a long time, and then realized that there's so many practical ways that, for example, depreciation is an accounting term, but it can mean several things. And so what I liked is how you said, illustrate, personalize, and you did the the illustration part just was key to me, because that's exactly how I explain it in Excel, because you think depreciation, when you drive a car off a lot, it depreciates, right? In accounting, it's the costing of that. And so that that comparison and the way they think about it just really helps them learn as well. So I think that's just really key to help them as they go off in the future.
As a parent of a child who attends for a learner, I just want to express my utmost appreciation for the culture that you have in your building, the way that there's so much excitement, at least my kid comes home and tells me, Bubba's Day, we have a thing where it's hour by hour. Okay, first hour, second hour, third hour, he knows this, this is, this is how I know what's going on. And when I hear about anything with the ball, one of your teachers throws the ball around. I don't know what that is, but I love it. And I love how there's the excitement, and um I know that my child is probably the exception, not the whole, but he loves going to school, he loves the interaction with the teachers, he loves learning. Um what you, whatever you are doing over there is just amazing. And you know it from the moment you step into that front office and you get to see Renee, you get to see, you know, Mr. Meister, if he's standing over there scaring a child somewhere. You know, I mean, he's.
We had that part out.
But everything is so good over there. I mean, you hear the horror stories about junior highs and. I like going there, I know that, I just, from a parent's perspective, not from sitting behind this this chair. I mean, I just appreciate what you guys are doing. Um and I love the whole vocabulary thing, I mean, as somebody who loves to read and you learn things, you learn so much when you read, you know, the vocabulary and, uh, case in point, um, you know, kids don't understand what words are, I mean, they, you know, be thrown at them, and like you said, the old way of doing, you know, definitions. Oh, great, you know, you got a list, you got to write my own, and you forget it five minutes later. And I like how you're putting, you know, the focus on just these grouping of words and how we can implement it into other ways of learning. And just, it's just awesome. I I just love to see that data of the improvements, so kudos to that teacher who stepped through and did every single one of them. I mean, I I can imagine it's probably pretty daunting and, oh, I gotta try something new. But to know that it worked and to, I mean, the excitement alone, and just to see that from a parent's perspective. I just, I love the fact that my kid loves going to school there. And um, thank you, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Well, he owes me some wine, that's.
I'll find that story.
Any any other questions, comments, concerns? Thanks Andrea, we appreciate it, it's always sharing. Okay, we will move on to our public comment for the evening. A board meeting is a meeting of schools district business held in public, it's not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those made in public comment, but will direct the superintendent to call for the presenters. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comment, so each presenter is being asked to keep their comments free. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and ask the presenter to be respectful of any person they comment above. Krista Rexton.
Not Krista Rexton.
I was gonna say, it's uh.
My mom was on not Krista, that was a tough act to call, there's some good at all. My name's Sandy Patrick, I'm at the L S, because I'm Krista Murphy, that's my unanticipated, so, sorry, he was on the far, but I just wanted to share a member of the month with you. So our member of the month for January is Marietta Cole. If you don't know Marietta, is she's a Lynch um district repair professional with us. Um she shared, we asked her to put a little bit of self about ourselves, so we can share a few. She says she's been at Lynch for three years now, and she also couldn't be here, so this is really all me. She says, I've been at Lynch for three years now, I've made some great connections with kiddos and some amazing women working here. When I'm not at work, I struggle to get back on the workout wagon, spending time with family and going to Florida to visit my baby sis and my nephews. She was also so touched that she was nominated. There was so much that her fellow L S members have stayed up here, but we really had to try and drill it down, because people have such positive things. Um she's dedicated to supporting her student and others, she shows great initiative in her position, and she offers support to fellow staff. One thing that I really wanted to highlight, this specific quote that somebody said, she said, our job isn't always textbook, sometimes what works on one day doesn't work on the next. One day she could be working with my student, and she came over specifically to offer me support, which was so appreciated. Overall, the Lynch staff admired Marietta's consistent support that she offers to her student, while also continuing to support the rest of the class, teachers, parents, and the whole Lynch community. Lastly, her uh her principal, Anina, shared with us that Marietta has demonstrated dedication, support, and commitment to our students and staff. Her willingness to go above and beyond have made a significant impact on the school community. We're truly grateful for her flexibility, hard work, and influence that she's had on our students. If you don't know Marietta, this is just the beginning of it, she really is a phenomenal human. Um so we just wanted to thank her for her service at the L S.
Great job, Kristi.
Okay, I think that's all for public comment this evening. We will head into our report, so first we have teaching, learning, technology. Principal Barr, would you please share a thought?
Yes.
Any committee report?
The Teaching, Learning, and Technology Committee met uh January twenty-second at three fifteen P M. Committee members uh here, Tim Luka, April Barr, and Jamie Wilkert. Others attending, Michelle Bradford, Jennifer Mudge, and Mary Moss. The meeting was called for order at three fifteen. The committee discussed grade level reconfiguration. Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Curriculum, Michelle Bradford, reviewed the grade level reconfiguration information that was sent in a weekender last week and asked the committee to share any ideas they may have. P D Advisory Committee Reconfiguration. Michelle Bradford reviewed flexibility provided in pupil accounting rules, which allows districts to use district-provided professional development, D P T D, hours to count as days and hours of pupil instruction. In order to utilize this flexibility, pupil accounting regulations require a district-wide professional development advisory committee appointed by the board. Specifically, the advisory committee must recommend at least eight hours of professional development be used for instructional hours and be composed of various members of the school community. Michelle Bradford shared the board-appointed committee members, which must be composed of teachers employed by the district who represent a variety of grades and subject matter specializations, including special education, non-teaching staff, parents, and administrators, with the majority of the membership of the committee being composed of teaching staff. The board committee unanimously supported the committee membership as presented. It will be, it will be placed on the February seventh agenda for full board consideration. Continuity of learning reconfiguration. Jennifer Mudge, grant supervisor, explained that under the American Rescue Plan, elementary and secondary school emergency relief, A S R three, local districts are required to develop and maintain a return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. She shared our continuity of learning plan, which outlines in detail the district's plan for a safe return to or maintenance of in-person instruction. The plan will be reviewed every six months during the life of the A R P, A S R three grant, and updates will be completed if needed. It was the consensus of the committee to seek full board approval at the February seventh board meeting. Field trip requests. The committee reviewed the following overly out-of-state field trips. Girl soccer team to travel to Grand Rapids on March fifteenth and sixteenth of this year. And the H O S A Health Occupation Student of America students to travel to Traverse City on April seventeenth through the twentieth of this year. The committee is recommending these trips be approved by the school board at the February seventh board meeting. Our meeting adjourned at three thirty nineteen.
Okay, any questions or concerns? Thank you, Principal Barr. We will now due to the Policy Committee. Doctor Novak, would you please share a thought or a comment?
The Policy Committee met on January twenty-sixth um at two P M. And the committee members, president was Lisa Novak and Jamie Wilkert. Members of the staff was Craig Watson, others attending was Kim Seaterly, Matt Wondway, Jennifer Timber, and Mary Moss. Uh we discussed policy and A G fifty-three fifty student-staff welfare crisis response plan. Kim Seaterly explained that as a part of the ongoing work with safety and security updates, changes were made to update policy and the A G fifty-three fifty student-staff welfare crisis response plan. Both the policy and A G are specifically designed to provide guidance to school staff when dealing with potential suicide or response to death or other traumatic event. The guideline has been converted to our standard guideline format and now combines both student and staff response. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval of the policy at tonight's meeting, our meeting adjourned at two fourteen P M.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you, Doctor Novak. That brings us to our presentations this evening. I will turn it over to you, Superintendent Andre.
Thank you, Madam President, uh our first presentation, see, within the budget development process, in the very capable hands of our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Mark Rader.
Okay, after so many years. So who throws a curveball today? A governor with her budget. You can get to that. So it's uh, you can see this presentation will have a number of items you've seen before. You'll see some new things, and then I was editing, if you noticed, me writing over there, some late-breaking news stories of what the governor did today, which will scare the bejesus out of us on the financial side. Okay, this will live for everybody. So this calendar is pretty consistent, we put it in there just so, from an education standpoint, for our um unit leaders. Nothing really changes, it's really depicted by the state revenue conference was a few weeks ago. There was no really surprises, because we already knew it was going to come out of that in the way of funding. February, as we had, Governor Keenan, I thought it was going to be next week, she came up to me with her budget, displayed, and I'll leave some comments there about what she presented. Some we anticipated, some we did not, but she threw out at us today. The big one is right in the middle there, April timeframe. Those who follow the political process, two seats in the House are vacant. The House doesn't plan to hold any hearings or any sessions until those special elections occur in April. And they're filled, they're predominantly Democratic, so they probably will remain Democratic, and it means the House will stay Democratic. But they're waiting for that to occur, so we probably won't see a school-wide budget come out of the House. We'll see one probably come out of the Senate in March, late March, maybe early April, we won't see any probably come out until late April, maybe even May from the House. So now we got one stake in the ground, the governors, we'll get the Senate, and then we'll see where the House comes. What's that mean for us? The end of that timeline is what we struggle with every time, because the governors like to say, we pass this school-wide budget by July first. The legal requirement by the state. That's about six months late for us, when you're right. So we'll be preparing budgets and we'll be working on what we know and heading to the June meeting with a proposed budget. It may be one of those years where what we propose probably doesn't pull a lot of water until school week is passed and we're changing it. Uh you know, making models come first day of the new this year. So what do we have globally? Well, no surprises here, but there are a few surprises. Inflation, I should be even slow, so what do we see? We saw the Fed raised interest rates eleven times from March of twenty-two to December twenty-three. We went from almost zero percent to almost six percent. Now that's the key rate, right, was mortgage rates, mortgages got as high as eight percent. That's what slowed down the economy, that's what they talked about slowing the recession down. Recession never happened, because one thing that's been going on since COVID is a shift in buying from services back to goods that they thought would change, and it hasn't changed. So people are still spending all the pent-up money that was there during the COVID period. So it's only economies where they're looking, trying to figure out what's really going on. Now mostly it's the same, we're not going to see a recession in the near future. But then again, we've got Middle East turmoil, we've still got Ukraine, we've still got North Korea and China. There's a lot of things in this mix that could turn out of dying. And so we watch those things. Labor market, you're going to see here in a couple slides, it's still tough. Michigan specifically, there's one and a half openings, there'd be one person on the other one. It's coming down, right? It was one seven, like two bucks.
Plus, when I was in UPS workers, it was about two dollars.
But that's no surprise, it's getting the tag of that for how long now, at least a year, year and a half, I mean, we're struggling, right? And we're no different than any other school district, any other industry out there trying to find workers. Then this whole slowing demand for low levels of investment, why? Well, the growth for our, growth of our economy is only supposed to be the two percent. Is that number sound familiar? Yeah, that's the Fed's target of what they want inflation to be. The good news is, you don't have inflation. The bad news is, you don't have investment, you don't have other pressures, and so it's a game in the end. State revenues, you'll see later here, will be lower next year. Well, there's no surprise, because the interest rates, they would have all the pent-up money, I think the state had nineteen billion dollars total for COVID. They're making a ton of money on investments at five percent. Now that's all starting to drop back down, and the excess funds aren't there, therefore there's not as much interest. The state level, there's lots to be concerned about. This top one is something that Matt, Kim, the rest of the group, we're going to have to deal with, because I already won't be here for many minutes. But this is a scary number, and in the next twenty years, the state of Michigan will be short eighty thousand workers. And that's the replacement of boomers, Gen X retire, and the below women is coming up. What do we know? We know on top of that, we are a net loss state, we have more people moving out than moving into the states, that adds to that. Then you have the birth rates. And you'll see here a little bit later, the peer account is a little scared, because we are exceeding deaths over births. There is no time in the near future that a downward trend line for students and births is going to change any time soon. Politically, I already mentioned, the Democrats have control, what's that mean? For us, we saw last year, control of the House and Senate, a number of bills being reduced, undo the right-to-work legislation. Some of that will take effect here on March thirty-first, April first. The technical underneath the exec was passing again, the majority. Some of that, they're waiting until the next session to do even more. So we don't know what the total impact and cost will be to schools. We know it's not going to be, it's been the last ten years, it's going to change, it's going to add more positives. The Cisco glyph is as mad as we discussed. The fiscal cliff is, as mad as we discussed this, it's a little scary term. The term is there because it is to grab your attention. We are ending four years of COVID dollars. We, it ends on September thirtieth, twenty-four year. We have a lot of money, actually, we hit the radar of the state because we still have a bunch of money unspent. What was it, fifty-two percent there or whatever? And so the state is looking, anyone who's got more than twenty percent, they're sending my most angry deal. Well, ours is already budgeted and spent inside to the H V A C units in the elementarys, which is gearing up here this spring, happening this summer. So we have a, every indication we would spend all that money if we weren't out of the COVID dollars for that, as well as a number of programs that Michelle continues to run, third, fourth year, fourth, fourth really, a third of the headwinds that we've had out of the COVID dollars. And those will be ending years in the past. So it is a fiscal cliff, but it's not just a fiscal cliff for us, a fiscal cliff for the state. They've had billions for years to put in schooling and fund a number of things. Categoricals, which are one-time funding in the state at best. Right now, there's only enough money in schooling budget for next year for one-third of the categoricals that are in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so there's going to be arm wrestle, as you see when I mentioned some of these the governor proposed, as to what's going to stay, what's going to go, and will we get per pupil foundational loss increase? Yes and the answer no is the magnitude that we've been getting for the last three years, four hundred, four hundred seventy. And as mentioned, pupil trends continue to be down. More at the micro level of the schooling fund. So two years ago, they changed the funding for special ed. This was the upcoming statewide initiative studying differential costs. And so they started to fund special ed different than just fully out of the foundational loss. And this continues to add a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty million to the schooling budget every year. Why do we care about that? Because it's a growing population statewide, not just in the peer county statewide. So that's money coming off the top of the schooling fund or special ed before any foundational loss can occur. It's just going to be a balancing act from where the money goes. Initiatives of school meals program, AKA free breakfast and lunch for everyone, one-time dollars, federal COVID dollars that were put in place this year, next year, that's going to be funded via the state fund, general fund, school aid fund. Higher education continues. Actually, higher education is down about two hundred billion from three years ago. It was a billion dollars coming out of the schooling fund, about nine hundred billion, eight fifty, nine hundred proposed this year. But what the governor proposed, the state of the state, yes, it's going to improve it. Three community college fairs graduating senior starting in twenty twenty-four. The funding hasn't been figured out where it's going to come from. Retirement cost, that continues to go, you can see a chart later here, and that's one of the areas where the governor threw a curveball at everyone today because we're funding at the healthcare side of the fund, hundred percent funded. We still have, from four, we still have fifteen years to twenty thirty-nine to get the pension side fully funded. And now she's decided today she wants to save six hundred and seventy million out of that fund and to fund another initiatives for increased schools and some other things. So this is just, I think vice president used the old shell game. This is the shell game we try to keep track of, where things are moving and how fast they're moving. Budget variables, so this is just a picture. It's gone, I mentioned it. This shows you a little here, so this is right off the state website. Those are the dollars that we received over the past few years of a different original S R formula and the equity, which was actually of S R one, S R two, S R three. So we're done with the top three. We're in that middle, and you can see the far right-hand column remaining three point four million. That's why the state is saying, well, you guys still look here and like, listen, it's going to be spent, we already have several budgeted factors in there. We've got the capital that will occur, which is now probably by August, the latest board might be July. We'll have all that expended, it will be done for the S R dollars. Here's the retirement. Apologize, it's a real small, I will make sure Mary sends the electronic version, you can read this better. But basically, what you see there is that dotted line is the rate that we pay a school district into the fund. So far left-hand corner, or left-hand top corner, this year we're paying about forty-eight cents, forty-eight percent of our new wage dollar earned by employee through that retirement system. It comes in a variety of pieces, and you see the pieces down the bottom where the bottom part is supposed to be blue is what we're paying directly. The purple is one-time dollars that's coming out of the schooling fund that the state made an adjustment in the retirement system. And so instead of being an unfunded mandate, they actually started to away a few years ago, funding that layer. And then the green layer is this U A A L, which is basically unfunded accrued liability. And you can see, you go way out. And that line is twenty thirty-nine, where you see it drops really steep. So this year, forty-eight, starting October one will be the new state year. That's the new retirement year for us. It's anticipated that rate will probably back down to forty-three-ish percent. For that dotted line comes down, it's going to stay in there for about five years, and you see it start to drop. The good news is, because there was certainly in schools in twenty thirty-nine, there'll be four billion dollars more for schooling because there will be no dollars. I mean, you can see the rate for us as a school district will drop down to like ten, twelve percent. And it's kind of what we're paying in the early nineties as a school district in the retirement system, we're going to change it with Prop eight. So this is important, and so one of the debates that was going on here in the last few months is, why are we so worried about paying this off? We know the healthcare fund is a hundred percent. We know that the pension side is healthier now than it was a few years ago. It's about eighty-five, eighty-six percent funded. It was as low as, low as seventy percent, which from pension standards gets a little bit of the other moment concern, but will your fund go bankrupt before you can actually fund it? Now, there was arguments, why don't we slow some of these rigs down, help school districts so the dollars will hang out and push that out? But now we see the governor says we fine, we'll just get a big chunk out of that, I'll use it to fund primaries. Which means that chart will not stay the same because if that prevails, if they adopt that, that six hundred and seventy million is missing those billion dollars there, that line's going to get pushed out. Let's talk about regular revenue, easy stuff. Look at students, look at the per pupil. This year we have ninety thousand, six hundred and eight dollars per student, roughly forty-one point four million in revenue for that. Right-hand side, lots of variables in the, not only COVID, but also in the categoricals that we haven't seen any indication of what's going to remain, what's going to change. That's going to be something we'll be looking at a lot here to do for. For ninety-six oh eight, right now, when you look at the schooling dollars in the fund valuation, there's about one hundred ninety, two hundred dollars. Governor proposed they have two hundred and forty-one dollars. I'm sure we should have two hundred and forty-one, but she's probably taking the balance of schooling down further than what was proposed at two hundred a few weeks ago by the legislature. So that's good news, but we're at four fifty-eight last year, four seventy, a year before, seven hundred a year before. So we're nowhere near where we were. With us, we lose this year a hundred and eighteen students, we see here shortly, we need about two sixty. So if the governor does two forty-one, we almost can cover the revenue from prior year with an increase in the foundational loss, but we don't get anything extra to play with. We're just trying to hold steady. If it's at two hundred, we short it off three hundred thousand. So you can see, the E means we're looking at to try to figure out from the budget. Pupil membership continues to be this downward trend, which is not going to change anytime soon. We are down to less than one point, we're at one point four million, one point four million students statewide last year. The revised numbers in January were one million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand for this year. No one knows where the kids keep going other than birth rates, but one theory is that more homeschooling and using a different source than public ed. So we continue to see this downward trend of students. This chart shows, I agree with Kim, Kim likes this chart because it really shows your downward trend, but it shows the births and it shows there's your class of twenty thirty-eight that was born in twenty twenty. Now, there's a little bit of uptake there because that was coming out of COVID, but it's continued to go back down. The peer county had seven hundred and fifty-eight births twenty twenty-two, a thousand and seventy-three deaths. Going all the way back to two thousand and sixteen, deaths had exceeded births in the peer county. So that doesn't seem, and the gap is going to be larger. So obviously, the aging folks dying off, there's not many births, we're hitting this gap. So we're going to see probably a shortfall of eighty thousand, even more in the peer county than some of the other counties in Hess and Grohl. Here's our count from the fall, so October, we're at forty-three oh six. We have predicted a hundred kids down, we're down a hundred and fourteen, so pretty good on target. But you'll see in the next chart, we worry because the trend is pushing back towards twelve or so years ago at the one fifty, one seventy-five. And that's, you know, we've lost more kids since October, so that's, that's October, October, October twenty-two, October twenty-three. If I looked at the federal account, we're probably down a hundred and fifty kids. But some years, we get this up and down, so you really can't look at it and worry about it because we get up and down, really worry about what's coming up. Kidergarten enrollment, coming here in a few weeks, we look for those indications, how many early ones we get, how many more we need to get our marks to stay on our trends. But you can see from the forecast from Fred, the consultant, ten years ago, we predicted these numbers close. We've stayed right on track. We had one anomaly here in twenty-one, we're a little bit below it. We've stayed right in between, the lowest, you know, probable, which is that orangish, salmon-colored in between. So more than likely, we're going to be on path by twenty twenty-six, probably in the forty-one, maybe as low as four thousand. So here's the actual numbers, you can kind of see what's coming up, far left-hand side of a hundred and seventy-five, working way up, we got back to a lower number, fifty-two, and now we're starting to creep back. And I had another calculation for this year from the outgoing graduating class, but I'm guessing it's going to be very similar last year, it's going to be right in that hundred and five to a hundred and ten number range. I'm going to do the calculation. Fund balance, what's our health? While we're still relatively healthy, we're below ten percent. Fund balance after the Italian anomaly for the COVID dollars, there's been twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at twelve point six. But you can see, we don't have the state average for twenty-three for the audits, it was just finished in June of twenty-three, but you can see the prior year is twenty point three with state average, we're at eight point two. My guess is the state average for twenty-three, when we find out come this summer with the audits, will probably be for twenty-three to twenty-one percent, or one and a half, maybe a whole percentage point higher. So we're still lagging, a lot of that is COVID, so you're going to start to see that state average drop down now for the next five years because all those dollars have gone, that kind of inefficient increase of the foundation, fund balances for districts. But we still are staying fairly healthy, which is good news. As long as the state can continue to fund this, at least if we're losing, if the time world of district, we can maintain that. If the gap starts getting too large, then we're going to have to deal with adjustments in these countries. And this is the picture of the schooling fund, so this really shows you, they had four point six billion excess starting this year, October one and twenty-two. Used a lot of it, exceeding the revenues for state to pay out in schooling and general fund, brought the balance down two point one. You see the difference between ongoing one-time, and why we watch that is because of one-time dollars, they're dead, they're gone. So in order to maintain two point one, we only got one point five billion ongoing, we're going to keep completing your fund balance. And you can see that as you look across left and right, drops down to a balance of five hundred million at the end of this year, which is the state's year of September thirtieth, twenty-four, and then it starts to grow. So fiscal twenty-five, fiscal twenty-six, the forecasters and economists already have, we're going to see the nominal growth of around two percent, which is the target from the Feds with dealing with inflation. The good news is we have some growth. The bad news is it's going to be very limited, which equates to us around a hundred ninety, hundred ninety to two hundred dollar per pupil increase for fiscal twenty-five, and then fiscal twenty-six, those are the next two fiscal years. Now, usual, we'll move forward developing our budget with what we know. We'll continue to look at our one-time funding dollars, our grant dollars, not just COVID, but our Title I, our thirty-one A, we'll put it all in there, try to balance it. We've got sessions with the bargaining leaders. It's called is next week, which is bargaining leaders. We've got first budget management meeting at the end of the month on the twenty-second. And so we'll have hopefully a little bit more information to share with them beyond this. We'll meet the legislature, like I said, and see what kind of changes they have. The big revenue conference is going to be again, like it's been during COVID. January is good, they're not going to do anything until they see where the revenues come in after past collections in April, and see what kind of adjustments we start to see in the revenue of the state. And then we'll have the budget prepared, the schedule for June for adoption, and June. Questions? I give you one.
What was our peak pupil at one time?
As a district, just full of ten thousand, I believe it was like ninety, hundred, or maybe?
Ninety, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two was our peak year. Nine thousand. Sixty-two hundred students when I started, that was thirteen years ago. But we, you know, when we contracted with Stanford Consultants to take a look at, in preparation for the merger, right, we did, we did ten-year forecasting, and we were within single digits of that forecast, right? So we identified, you know, we first started looking at student population, looked at the efficiency of the studies of the buildings, and we knew twelve years ago, we were going to be closing the buildings, we were going to be merging the high schools. So none of this is surprising. And then when you look at the statewide trends in terms of birth rate, deaths, number of students that are coming off of those, where they're going, it is, it's concerning in our state. And even though upside down, we are a little bit short of those.
I say it from the key of law because there are literally hundreds of data points from the economy side. So just one, we hear, we know the news, pay attention to news. So what's the governor's push? Let's electrify the state with twenty-four, right? We're at seven percent. We have to be by thirty-five percent in two years, ain't going to happen. Now there's a push, it starts in California, everything starts, California comes east, right? There's been a push, there's twenty-seven states who have this, who are now finding that locally, they're getting resistance and they're getting local communities to say, no more windmills, no more electric, no more this. And so now it's starting to slow down even further. Problem is, we don't have the infrastructure, and we know that, right? Why do I mention that? Because where do we get our revenue from? Taxes at the pump, both diesel and gasoline, and a ton of revenue comes to state that way. And we go to electrify. The question, the result, I've only seen one story about this, was a debate about two months ago. So we start to have tolls and start charging everyone for every mile because you're not going to be getting billions of dollars of revenue coming out of the pumps anymore if you end fossil fuels, you're going to have to come over the old tax base. That's a little scary because there's so much in schooling that's particularly about that, it's too hard to even figure out what that would mean for schooling, if we watch things like that, because it will affect us.
One common thing that people don't know about the free power that I think that they need to be aware of is that they, she didn't go to twenty-one this year, but only till twenty twenty-four to see what the cost is. Because the first level of any funding has to go if that hurts. So for example, there are four suicide rapaces, and see if they didn't federal fund it, federal help them yet, before they can say that they should re-acknowledge. They call it a legitimate scandal.
Which is kind of tied back to her state of the state, which she wants, every senior to have to fill out a fast one. Now she can do a backstory, you have just shared backstory about.
That's why, because they have to take first level, which is the federal funding. So, not that it's always the case, and I'm not defending it by any, but I'm just saying that people don't always understand that. So, not that it's always the case, and I'm not defending it by any, but I'm just saying that people don't always understand that. They, they are forced to do that, so that's what's going to happen. If they get program, that pays the first, and pays everything pretty much, so.
So there's still.
But I think part of the initiative too is to keep people here, right?
It is.
Let's face it, our, our numbers are, you know, people are fleeing. So one way, they're fleeing to California because they've got free college, or Texas, or wherever. I think one of the things is, is they're trying to keep people here, not that it's probably the best solution.
I think overall, I mean, we're going to see a decent funding, but it's not what we had the last few years, where we can gain, we can get ahead. So it's going to be a couple of leaner years, not going to be as lean as what the Biden came through for, but it's going to get leaner until we can see some stability. And we see some of those funding mechanisms change, and where they, where they push in, and what's the target. And it's hard to argue, not free, free schools, hard to argue, not community college and stuff, but they come with huge price tag and pain. And for two, enhance the art, for three, get the funding, continue on those.
More to come.
More to come.
Always film, that's great news. You were a parent of thousands.
And then, and then. Why accountants are so necessary, right? We bring the good and the bad.
That's right.
You'll always have a job.
Well, the good news is, there's not a lot of new information here. So I'm going to, uh, this is the time of year at our actual March board meeting. Um, extensive part of that meeting, uh, will be to complete the superintendent evaluation. And you come out of that meeting, and, um, the evaluation's finalized, um, those things occur at March. So in advance of that, we always, um, like to, both for the purposes of board, um, remind you of what's going to be happening because there are, um, while there's, this is a process that lasts the entire year, um, more responsibility to review things and complete things. There's a lot of tasks that are coming up, um, as well as kind of informing the public so that we get to next month's meeting, there's some understanding as to what things are happening. Um, so really quickly, um, just a few reminders. The superintendent evaluation process is very similar to the processes that are already in place for all of our professional staff. So, um, you'll see things modeled the same. There are some regulations in Michigan that drive that, three eighty, twelve forty-nine specifically. We have to use specific tools, we have to consider growth, a lot of regulations that we have to follow. Um, we take those regulations and put them into board guidelines. Twelve forty, fourteen twenty, and thirty, thirty-two twenty are all the details of our staff evaluation process, um, those things are very similar. One note at the bottom, and I'm willing to mention it here, there were, we haven't seen changes in evaluation for quite some time, until last summer. And three eighty, twelve forty-nine was amended, um, and there will be some, some significant changes, we'll talk about those tonight, that will take place in July of twenty twenty-four. So those changes, um, won't apply to this cycle, or any, any of the professional staff that are being evaluated in twenty-three, twenty-four, but there are things that are going to be coming in place for next year. I mentioned that, we are currently kind of updating our guidelines so that we can get those things in place and start to make people aware of those changes so that we can hit the ground running next year. You'll see some stuff, um, weekender, just some work that we're doing on that right now.
You made a mental control there.
Yeah, sorry. As a quick reminder, we are required to publicize all of those things I just talked about, and you can find all of them on our district website. Um, the tool that the board uses for our superintendent evaluation process is the M A S B Evaluation System. The board was trained, they're required to be trained, new members are trained, and we comply with all of that on stuff. The process is really a year-long process, it starts in April, um, that's when we reaffirm, that's the process and the tool that we're using. There's informal updates, informal updates that take place throughout. February is when we review that process, when I'm done, um, you'll hear a formal update, uh, this evening, and then the full evaluation takes place in March, and we start the whole thing over again in April, so full year. These are the components, there are several parts that are a part of it. And here, this just gives you an overview of the percentage. Student growth currently is forty percent, just progress towards meeting, district goals is ten percent. And then those rubrics that there's, applying those individual things that are scored on, that's actually fifty percent of the overall evaluation. As it relates to the superintendent, the major change that's going to be coming next year is that the student growth, um, is, is being reduced from its current level of twenty percent, it's going to be reduced for next year. So, um, you'll see again next year, that's decreasing slightly. Of those pieces, um, of that professional practice, so presently, we'll make up half of it. There are five different areas that we look at, governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, and instructional leadership. So those are kind of the subcomponents that we review, um, in the individual rubrics, and you will be taking a look at those, I'm sure you have them all here. Student growth is a pretty significant portion. Um, the thing that I like to highlight here, student growth is a required component for any position that has instruction. So, um, that is all of our instructional staff, including teachers, building administrators, central office, um, administrators that have instruction as a part of their fundamental job responsibilities. It is required by law, the student growth data is considered, and we do incorporate it. Our methodology for calculating it for the superintendent, it's the exact same methodology, it's the same data set that we use for our teachers, for our principals. Um, we go, you know, we take that information from a teacher level, and we just, we apply it on a building level for the building administrator and on the district level. And it's all the same data, just applied in a broader sense. And again, that's the piece that's going to be shrinking, um, as we refer to next year. We calculate student growth, there are two components to it, it's not just a single data set. You have to look, there is standardized state assessments, um, but there is some other growth measures. This is just showing you, half of it is a state assessment, half of it is other growth measures. So it's not just one test that gives you that student growth score, it's, um, a variety of things across different grade levels, um, that makes that up. The final, the fifty percent progress will grow, a year from now, that professional practice rating, we talked about those. Um, this is the information, and here's your homework. In SharePoint, um, this is where, throughout the year, Matt puts evidence of each one of these things. So, um, you know, the idea of evaluation is not necessarily to create a bunch of new things, but to demonstrate how these things are being met in the work that happens every single day. Um, and so you can, we will, probably, I think in the weekender, um, you'll be sent the reminders about how to access that stuff, what to look at, um, and those details will be there, and you can find the evidence of each one of those pieces. This is an example of just one, so we're going to, we're going to take out the business and finance. So there's a lot of different, uh, but it's broken down even further. Every single one of those components, um, it's broken down with, with a finer level of, of reporting, and this is just an example of one of them. So business and finance represents everything from budget development to facility management and resource allocation. So it's a very comprehensive assessment, looking at a lot of different things. So as a reminder, um, you will be asked to kind of on your own, take a look at those things, review that evidence. Um, there will be a sample where you'll kind of write down your scores, Matt actually will complete a self-assessment. Um, and then a month from now, we go into closed session, um, that is what we will be discussing and reviewing that information. Um, in closed session, we, there, there will be a discussion about what those scores are. Um, the student growth will be sent to you, so the student growth score is already calculated, that's not something you can calculate, you're just informed about, we will provide that to you. Um, a review of progress on those district-wide goals will also occur. Um, all of that, this, this is the sample of, again, of what one of those looks like, those individual ratings. Those are summarized, um, averaged per content area, and it all dumps into a big calculation to have you get that final score. When we're done, you'll return to open session, those scores are read out loud, um, and the overall rating, um, is provided, and board adopts to begin your evaluation. That's the process. So again, the highlight, we'll send you in the weeker, the weekender, those details on how to access that information and even the review. Um, most of you are real familiar with this process by now, so if that, any individual questions, feel free to reach out. Um, but nothing new really this year, some changes in those percentages, looking forward to next year. Questions?
Thank you.
Well, this makes my presentation a bit climactic, because all I do in my formal, second formal update is, um, as Kim indicated, I have placed for evidence in those different buckets, uh, a variety of, um, pieces of evidence for you to evaluate. And so in effort to, um, guide you in that process, this is the same, this is the same timeline that Kim just identified. We completed everything, um, up to this point in March, represents the end of that process and the beginning moving forward to twenty-four, twenty-five. But for your references, on your LCS Google Drive account, you would select shared drives, click on LCS School Board, and then view the evaluation folders. I am in this shared drive at Google, uh, all year long, and there is a component on that that is kind of a hub for, for school board member questions, where at any time during the year, you guys know you can go in there and ask questions and review the same data that I submit. So for me, I love this process, it's ongoing, I look at the rubric, um, if there's an area where I don't have any evidence, it's probably because I haven't been paying enough attention to it, so it's a reminder. Every time I go on here, like, hey, this is an area I, I need to put evidence for the board review. And it also just gives me a really well-rounded, um, opportunity through the incremental, incrementally through the course of the year to pay particular attention to the goals of the peer county. And so from being the evaluator, um, it's a really valuable process because we know and we teach our principals and our teachers that evaluation is not a one-shot deal, right? It's not a, a moment in time where I'm going to tell you everything good or bad about your performance for the year, but it's an ongoing process, and I should not be evaluated any differently than we evaluate all of our professional staff. So, um, I, I love this tool, and it, it's really helped me grow professionally, so looking forward to your feedback next month, and just invite me to get on that, on the drive as soon as possible to evaluate that evidence and share with me your, your, you know, sort of criticism and feedback in March because it always ends up being a really good opportunity for me to grow. And in year thirteen of my superintendentship, I can tell you that, uh, a lot has changed in thirteen years, indeed professionally, in terms of how I execute my day-to-day operations, but also how I interact with individual board members, the board as a whole, and the overall impact that has on my district leadership is very, very important to me professionally. So, um, you know, we're all only as good as the time we commit to the process, so looking forward to that. Questions?
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Laundrie. Thanks for that, and it's our presentations for tonight, so let's get into our action items. First, we have in our consent grouping, uh, approval of minutes of the January tenth, twenty twenty-four. We have some overnight trip requests, um, help occupation students in Grand Rapids to travel to Traverse City, um, Michigan on April seventeenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Girls soccer team to travel to Grand Rapids, Michigan on March fifteenth to sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Key Club students to travel to Lansing on February sixteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And then we have first, reading board policy, it's policy sixty-three fifty, student up there. Anyone have any items they wish to be removed from the consent grouping?
Like, what's the meaning of the minutes to wait?
That's not quite, it's got to say consent, so the reading of minutes to wait and consent items. I'm sorry, I was just talking, we were just talking. Because they just talked about minutes.
Okay, I have a motion and. And a support. Dr. Gomez. Ms. Hopeker. Mr. Littler. Dr. Watson. Mrs. Lamar.
Aye.
Mrs. McConna. This is how it says that, motion carries. Then we have the twenty twenty-four M A S B board director candidates. So I think at the very back of your packet, there are two candidates. But we only can swap the block, right? Very best, right?
Yes.
So. Someone can make a motion, and we always can discuss the motion once the motion's ready. So I'll give you this, that's there. To, to take another review.
I mean, you've got to come to the team. Right, that's what I mean.
I have a motion, I mean, vote for, or we vote for, um, vote for one, uh, please. I second that.
So.
That's what I know.
Okay, so I have a motion, and someone, does someone support it?
I'll support it.
Okay. Um, any discussion on this motion? Okay, sounds like it's ready for a vote. Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Mrs. Hopeker. Uh, Mr. Littler.
Aye.
Dr. Watson.
Aye.
Mrs. Lamar.
Aye.
Mrs. McConna.
Aye.
Mrs. Panum says aye, motion carries. Okay. And we've got M R action items, so let's go into board member communication.
I just wanted to, um, my, to A. Woodman's sports leadership this weekend in Lansing, and she could not stop talking. She got up at six o'clock Saturday morning, they went to Lansing, got back, I think, at six o'clock Saturday night, didn't stop talking until nine P M. Got up at six A M. Monday, and she was up before, I think, at the, probably, doing hair, ready to roll, and she, it was awesome to see her excited, but just the information they went through, it was about female empowerment themselves and learning team, but also individual, and it was just a really beautiful program. So I had never heard of it before, this is the first time that it's come to me. Did she? Yeah, so I will see her excited for her, but I think there were ten, nine or ten girls that went, so it was, it was a very cool program.
And so are coaches as well.
Yeah, coaches went as well, so the three valid coaches, and then they were soft all of those types, there was a lot of, about all of the different coaches that were there, so it was very cool, it's very interesting.
I had the pleasure today of being a spelling judge at Murphy Elementary, and I have a list of the words, and some of the words that these kids were able to spell.
We're going to put them in RW's, uh, I for that vocabulary.
I know.
Why can't they say anything about spelling, just understand what they mean?
And it was interesting, because there were kids that were asking for, you know, to put this word in a sentence. And the first word that triggered me, this young lady asked, what does the word hallucinate mean? And all of us judges were going, I don't even know what we should say, like. They're, it's great, they should know. They're fifth grader, they should know what this word means. But it was, it, it kind of leads to the whole definition of words. And, I mean, hallucinate was a word that they didn't get. Terarium. Versatile. Planetarium. Meningitis. Cinematic. I mean, to see, there were kids that just got up there and, and then there were kids that took, took extra time. And there were tears, and there was a lot of consoling from friends and from judges. It was, it was such a great experience to see these kids. And, you know, public speaking is not easy for everybody. And I know that I've told this board before, and I, I used to be shy. And, and I spoke to a couple of the kids that were really timid. You know, there was a little intermission. And I said, the fact that you got up there and stood in front of that podium, and you looked at four people that you maybe know or didn't know, and you tried, that is the first step in being able to approach an audience and take control of it. And, I mean, there was one young lady who literally tears were streaming down her face. And I just, I wanted to hug her, but she didn't. I hugged other kids, because that's what I do. Um, but it was so awesome to see the other students consoling them. And you did a great job. And then just the, the peer support from their friends. It, I mean, I wanted to cry, which kind of shocks everybody.
What?
But it was a beautiful moment, and why, we've got some great kids with some vocabulary lessons that are going to be at your building next year. And that group of fifth graders did a fantastic job. And so Jaden, who took first place, and Noah took second. And they'll represent Murphy at the spelling bee whenever that is happening. But it's always so nice to be able to go back to the elementary buildings because, you know, if your child was there however many years ago, and there may be some teachers that were still there, or, oh my gosh, this doesn't look anything like what it used to look. And being able to see the new gymnasium progress and to see how the building is coming together. And I see how they walled off one entrance because that's where the entrance to the gym is going to be. And just to see all of the fun things going on in our elementary. I recommend anybody, if you've got a half an hour, just go in there and read to some kids or just go observe. It's awesome. I am so excited because I was able to catch up with a couple of my friends. And I'm going to go observe in their classroom and talk to them about being civic-minded and what the role of a trustee is. And they always love to hear about how I'm Mr. Wondry Fox.
Mr. Wondry loves it too.
And I remind them, I'm not the only one. There's seven of us that make that decision.
Yeah, he can be luckier.
But I'm telling you, it's so neat for those kids because they don't understand how the whole process works. They just think you're the guy. And I don't know what these people at the board do. But, and, and it's nice to give them that information because, you know, maybe one of them will go home and talk to their parents about it. And I just, it's so fun. And I just wanted to share that with you guys, that I was so glad that I was able to do that. And also, I know somebody's going to bring it up, that we've got kindergarten roundup coming up. I saw these in the elementary building, and I grabbed one because I wanted to talk about it tonight. And just, I love how much we do to outreach to our community and to the kids and to the parents to encourage them to bring their kids here to appear. And I love how we've done that. And it's just so wonderful to see, so, all right, I yield our...
I was going to say, just listening to Wyatt and your presentation, every time we get done with a school's presentation, it just takes me back to feel like when we went to school, teachers were like on an island. Every teacher was on their own island, right? They taught, and someone might have a fantastic way of doing hikes, but they kept it to themselves. The other islands never learned it, you know? They had to figure it out themselves. And it's like so nice to see that it's such a collaboration. And teachers are passing good things on, they're passing bad things on, like, don't do this. You know, like, it's kind of just amazing to see the cooperation that's happening in school, here, everywhere. Every time you listen to it, it's, it just doesn't, to me, it didn't seem like it was that way. It was like, it was that teacher, and then you went to that teacher. They taught two different ways, you learned two different ways, it didn't matter. So I just think that's still pretty cool. And then I had the privilege of, with our leader fund, of meeting with the ambassadors. It's a new program that started up. And I think it's going to be one of the most exceptional programs that the schools come up with. For those who don't really know the ambassador program, there's a representative from each school that not only the leader fund can reach out to, to, to have a person at that school to talk to so that we can really relay messages and information back and forth. But any other kind of civic group that's looking to communicate with a, a school or the schools in general, instead of trying to attract someone down or do it, they're going to be a part of it. So it's a learning process, it's a learning curve. So we're just starting that process right now. But I think that as we learn and it grows, I think it's going to be a phenomenal improvement in how we get the community and the schools to work as to... So, in raising funds, but not just raising funds, but all the activities that are going on. So I think that's a great program that started, so.
Exciting.
Yours?
How about, anyone else?
I just, one thing, I have my spelling bee opportunity next week at Schindler's Island. That is, if you haven't gotten the spelling bee, it is awesome. It's heartbreaking and awesome at the same time. But I do look forward to that, so it's an exciting thing. And I look forward to just going to Schindler's because of all the things that we've already done in that hallway at the school. I will turn it over to you, to Mr. Wondry.
Thank you, Madam President Wyatt. Megan, Gabrielle Darlene, Austin Johnson, I, well, well done. Talking more about what you presented today, but I think a lot of application, riposte for our district. I hope you guys still, kudos to you. Congratulations to Marietta, R L E S P Member of the Month. Sounds like she's making quite a contribution. And then my final note is a sad one. But you think that when you walk into a building and students look at me like, oh, that's the superintendent, you walk in a building with Jared Field. Jared Field is widely regarded as the eldest of this district by many different various groups. Certainly our students, our parents. But Jared was my first hire. When I was, when I was named superintendent of the pier, I, I felt that this, this position was going to be really one of the cornerstones to charting a new pathway forward for the pier school. So we had to tell our story. And I distinctly remember Jared's interview. Jared is a very understated, humble person, and he was that way in his interview as well. And I joke with him since that he was very underwhelming in the interview. He was not, he's that personality that came in with all these, you know, flurry of ideas. And, but I was so impressed with his writing ability, was the thing that I was most drawn to. His candidacy ended up being, I think, one of his strongest assets. And when you look at the amount of change that our district has gone through in the last thirteen years, from merger, from all the different academic programs, homeschool partnership, you know, the final passage of the bond. The person that's really articulated that story for an entire community, really, if I'm being honest, it's Jared. And he, he told, he has a, has a unique and uncanny ability to capture the essence of the story and highlight great stories about our staff, great stories about our kids, and do it in a way that is witty and humorous and heartfelt. And we got to the point where we were kind of finishing each other's sentences. So this is, this is a tough loss for our district because he really was in many ways. He always desired to be behind the scenes, but in many ways, he was the face of our district because he crafted all those stories and the narrative of who we are, so.
We need to Jared.
He wasn't Jared, he can only be Jared. Yeah, so he hates this kind of stuff because he truly, he truly, really is one of the most humble people I've ever had the opportunity to meet. He did, he had no experience in education before he came to appear. We wish him well in his endeavors, he had a great opportunity in his, in his next career pathway. His gains certainly are lost, and I know you'll join me in thanking Jared for his many years of dedicated service to us. And I know our staff, our parents, and our students alike are all, he is just a universally loved character. And for good, good reasons. So personally, I'm giving this Jared, but I also know I'm speaking to many, many people in our school community that he was, he was, he did great things for us. And the pier schools is better for having him be here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent Wondry. We will listen. With that...
Motion to adjourn.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Mrs. Hopeker.
Mr. Luttrell.
Aye.
Dr. Watson.
Aye.
Mrs. Lamar.
Aye.
Mrs. McConne.
Aye.
Let's say bye. Meeting adjourned.